Public, for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivi- of all, liberty and justice for all.
Cecily, roll call, please.
Counselor Sanchez?
Here.
Counselor Thorstad?
Here.
Counselor Trask?
Here.
President Protem Mahler? Mayor Coleman?
Here.
Counselor Gorley?
Here.
Counselor Richards?
Here.
Let the record show that we have six present and one absent. Protem Mahler is on his only vacation for the year. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Sorry for his, yeah, excuse. And so we have a motion in a second on the table. Cecily, please call for our vote.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Thorstad?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Let the record show that we have six ayes and no nays. Moving on to the consent agenda. Within the consent agenda, there's a request for council action in three minutes. Counselors can pull anything from the consent agenda or make a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve, approve the consent agenda. Cecily, please call for a vote.
Counselor Thorstad?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yep.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Let the record show that we have six ayes and no nays to approve the consent agenda. Moving on, recognition of visitors and hearing of petitions. We have a special recognition, a life-saving award tonight. Captain Cummings?
Hello there. First, I just want to say thank you to everybody here, council, mayor, city manager, for allowing me to speak on this topic today. It's one of my favorite things to do is to talk about the good things our officers do out there. And today, I'm here to talk about one officer in particular, and that is Officer Garrett Bolcom. And I would really love it, Garrett, if you would come up here and stand with me so that everybody can look at you and we talk about you. So Officer Garrett Bolcom has been with the Sweet Home Police Department for a couple of years now, and he does really good work on a regular basis. But I'm here to talk about one event in particular. So on June 17th of this year, at about 11:00 PM, the Sweet Home Police Department received a request for assistance from the Lynn County Sheriff's Office Dispatch Center. They dispatched fire and medics for our area. Medics were en route to a location in town where somebody had unfortunately attempted to end their own life by hanging and, and other means. Officer Bolcom here responded very quickly. And from what I've seen in the video, he wasted no time jumping into action and taking the appropriate and necessary life-saving measures, including CPR. And at one point, he was actually able to get a faint pulse and some shallow breathing, but that faded, and that didn't stop him. He kept going and, and worked hard for as long as he could, until a few minutes later, when the medics arrived and he was able to hand over the life-saving efforts to them. And they did a fantastic job as well. But after that, he spent time with the spouse of this individual and helped comfort them through what I'm imagining is a very difficult experience for them to go through. But in the end, this turned out positively because medics were able to stabilize that individual and transport them to the hospital. And today, the information I have is that that individual is expected to make a full medical recovery, thanks in large part to the actions of Officer Bolcom. And I would say that what he did that day is in line with the highest standards of the law enforcement profession, and he is a credit not only to Sweet Home Police Department, but also to the community at large. And it is with great honor that, that I am here and able to present to you today the Sweet Home Police Department Life Saving Award. Thank you very much. So what we have for him there is a, he's got a medal and a pin to wear on his shirt on a daily basis and a letter to describe the, the incident and his, his good actions that day. So, thank you.
Officer Bolcom, I just want to say thank you as well. And, and I also spoke with the family and the spouse, and your compassion and integrity in dealing with the whole thing was just everything and more that we want to see in Sweet Home, and you really do exemplify exactly what our Sweet Home PD is all about. So thank you so much. Just, I appreciate you. And then, is there anybody else who would like to say anything?
My name's Jen, and I have a note here from the spouse. After, a day after in the ICU, he is now receiving the treatment he needed, and he has expressed a desire to continue living, which he has not done for several years. He has no idea that so many strangers would care about him and his life. Thank you for not judging him and just jumping in in the situation to help.
Thank you, Officer. Thank you, Officer. I know that meant so much to the family and the community. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is a public comment. We have a request for a public comment from Robert Egner. Please come forward. State your name and your address in the microphone, please.
Hello? Okay. My name is Robert Egner. I live at 28628 Ridgeway Road. I'm here to speak on what I just witnessed in the work session. Kelsey brought up the fact that you guys have been trying to work on rules, and you guys did nothing today. She brought it up multiple times, and nobody said anything. It amazes me that you can almost cut the tension with a knife in this room. I'm here every two weeks, and nobody brought up anything. I don't understand that. So I'm going to make some requests. One, don't table it again if she's going to be gracious to continue to set up a meeting for you guys to try to get this all taken care of. And two, specifically, I would like to see some rules put into place about the conduct of counselors out in the community and here. The way people speak to each other and the way they speak out in the community as elected officials. I think there should be some accountability to that, and I think the council should have the ability to hold each other accountable for the actions of the people that you guys are sitting next to. It's really frustrating that nothing got done during that, when I've been here every two weeks and watched this, for lack of a better word, shit show. Be better. Figure it out. Come back with some rules. Figure out a way to hold each other accountable. Maybe there needs to be some rules put into place where if somebody acts out of the interest of the council or outside of the guidelines that you guys set, you guys can censor them somehow. Something needs to be done. I hope you guys figure it out next time and not waste everybody's time. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Moving on, there's no old business, new business. Request for Council Action, Resolution Number 11 for 2024, Appointing a City Budget Officer.
Good evening. So you have a few resolutions. First one on the docket is to just appoint a budget officer. This is a Oregon budget law rule that you have to do every single year. So we had not done this resolution yet, so before the end of the fiscal year, it is just appointing myself as the budget officer as your contracted finance director.
Any questions from counselors? So we have an RCA with this resolution before us. And we need something from council.
So moved is recommended.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Cecily, please call for a vote.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yep.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Thorstad?
Yes.
Let the record show we have six ayes, no nays, and one absent to approve Resolution Number 11 for 2024. Moving on, Request for Council Action, Resolution Number 12 for 2024.
So this resolution is for the current fiscal year expenditures. Basically, at the end of the year, I go through and make sure that we are not over budget on any single line item, and if we are, we move appropriations from, say, if we didn't spend as much in personnel services, but we'd spent a little more in materials and services, we move appropriations around a little bit just to make sure everything is in line with the budget. So this resolution just re-appropriates all the funds into correct categories. That way, you're not over budget and breaking any Oregon budget laws.
And if I can add one little piece with that, because we had just redone the budget, we had to estimate a fair amount of things. So just some minor things had to be tweaked in order to make it all correct.
Any questions from counselors? Any action from council?
So moved is recommended.
I'll second that, too.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 12. Cecily, please call for a vote.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Thorstad?
Yes.
Let the record show that we have six ayes, no nays, and one absent to approve Resolution Number 12 for 2024. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, Public Hearing and Request for Council Action. So at this time, I'm going to open up a public hearing at 6:43. There's questions that I have for counselors. Do any members of the city council need to make a declaration of bias, conflict of interest, or ex parte information? Counselor Sanchez?
No.
Counselor Gorley? Counselor Trask?
No.
Counselor Thorstad?
No.
Counselor Richards?
Nope.
And myself, I do not. Staff report, please.
So every year, Oregon budget law requires you to elect and pass a resolution that you are able to receive state's shared revenue. You receive state shared revenue from a few variety of sources, and those, all of those funds go into the general fund, which are used for the general operations of the city. So this is the opportunity for any public, member of the public, to voice their opinion on where those funds should be spent, and this is just specifically speaking on those exact state shared revenues.
Okay. Thank you. This time is now open for public comment. The standard three-minute time rule applies. If anybody would like to speak to the, this item, they can come forward to the seat and speak into the microphone. Is there anyone online? Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing now at 6:45. We do have this resolution before us as counselors, and you can ask questions or you can make a motion.
So moved is recommended.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Cecily, please call for a vote.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Uh, yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Thorstad?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Let the record show that we have six ayes, no nays, and one absent to approve Resolution Number 13 for 2024. Moving on, Request for Council Action, Resolution Number 14 for 2024.
So as part of the resolution that you agreed to just a few minutes ago, you also have to certify that the city provides services in at least four out of the seven categories that the state of Oregon identifies, which are police protection, fire protection, street construction, maintenance and lighting, sanitary sewer, storm sewers, planning, zoning, and subdivision control, or one or more utility services. You, as the city of Sweet Home, offer all of those services except fire protection that's offered by another district, so you do qualify to receive state shared revenue. So this is the resolution just noting your approval to provide those services during this next fiscal year.
Thank you. Any questions from counselors? I'll entertain a motion.
So moved is recommended.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 14 for 2024. Cecily, please call for a vote.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yep.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Thorstad?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Let the record show that we have six ayes, no nays, and one absent to approve Resolution Number 14. Moving on, Request for Council Action, Resolution Number 15 for 2024.
So this is your resolution for making appropriations for the next fiscal year. According to Oregon budget law, until you pass this resolution, the city cannot actually spend a single penny of its money after June 30th, going into the new fiscal year until a resolution is passed. So by passing this resolution tonight, making the appropriations in the budget document that's included in your packet, you are allowing the city to spend money.
I can add one more piece. This will also be with the budget, which was unanimously approved by the Budget Committee.
Okay. Counselors, any questions? Okay. Entertain a motion.
So moved is recommended.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Cecily, please call for a vote.
Counselor Richards?
Yep.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Thorstad?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Let the record show that we have six ayes, no nays, and one absent to approve Resolution Number 15 for 2024. Moving on, Request for Council Action, Old City Hall Lease Negotiation Authority.
Good evening. So I'm very excited to discuss this potential lease option. CSC, which is the Community Services Consortium that we have been partnering with off and on for the past decade at least, which provides utility services, workforce development training, housing guidance, and many, many other services, is interested in leasing this side of City Hall. And they have already given us an initial offer. They would like to move in as soon as possible, and it would provide both revenue, but also they would be providing in-kind services to the city of Sweet Home, who, which would include park services, remodeling services, and so forth. They also will be training sort of a succession team to then be able to work for the fire district, some of the hand crews keeping our community safe. They'll be learning various workforce development, different types of tools, and there will also be some additional program managers, and they will be bringing an entire program to provide services to Eastland County, but they'll even be moving some of their programs from other locations here to Sweet Home. So this will be bringing in potentially 30 additional jobs into Sweet Home, as well as workforce development training and much-needed services into Sweet Home. And are there any questions on that?
Madam Mayor, if I may, yeah. When you say it's going to be giving 30 jobs to the community, is that them and their staff, or will it be open for people to apply to go through their workforce program, or...?
Thank you so much for asking that question and allowing me to clarify. That is to be a local program. So they are going to be trying to bring people from Sweet Home as much as possible that are interested into that workforce development program, into training all levels of jobs. And it also, they're going to be doing workforce development in cycles, so it'll be an ongoing, repetitive thing that will be giving very, very crucial and helpful job training in a variety of areas. It'll be helping to provide potential firefighters, potential public works officers, and so forth. And so it's one of those things that is not only going to help us in the immediate term, but is going to be an ongoing program to provide training and job training and trades training for many years to come. And they are looking at being a partner here for a long time.
Counselor Richards, you have a question?
There we go. I just want to say this is a great thing to have happen, so thank you, Kelsey, for getting it all ready. We're starting.
This is a wonderful opportunity for our community to have CSC here and to be training workforce and providing workforce development. I'm just really excited about this as well.
Great. We are really excited, and I want to thank staff, too, because this is, all been in the works for a little while and, and so far, so it's exciting.
Counselors, this is before you, as a request for council action. It can be modified. It can be presented or requested just to come forward as is. Any action of council? So moved is recommended.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Cecily, please call for a vote.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Thorstad?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Richard?
Yes.
Let the record show that we have six ayes, no nays, and one absent to approve Old City, or sorry, City Hall Lease Negotiation Authority. Moving on, Old City Hall Lease Negotiation Authority. Thank you. I just realized that I had reversed those. Thank you for your patience there. So, Old City Hall. So right now, we have had the fire district in Old City Hall, and we'd be working with them on potentially taking up a different space or moving out in the near future. They have expressed an interest in that as well, so this would be mutually beneficial. We currently have Ridgeway Health, which is looking for a new location and has requested to have a lease in Old City Hall. What we would really like to do with that space that we would recommend is not only approve the potential lease with Ridgeway Health, but then open that up to be a wellness center. We have other agencies that have expressed interest in being in that building as well, and we think it would be a big benefit to Sweet Home. So tonight, I would ask you to just vote on the lease for Ridgway Health in Old City Hall, but to also potentially give me authority to work on bringing additional leases forward to you in the future to develop this wellness center. Any questions from counselors?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve the authorization of the city manager to negotiate and approve and monitor current and future lease agreements for the building.
I will second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor, can I just say something? I'm very grateful that Ridgway came to us and we have a space available. Dr. Milstein is an asset to our community, and I would love to have him in that building. I'm so grateful that you have worked really hard to get tenants and fill vacant buildings and bring these type of services and retain these type of services in our community, so thank you.
I wholeheartedly agree with that. Cecily, please call for a vote unless there's further discussion. Go ahead.
Counselor Thorstad?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yep.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Let the record show that we have six ayes, no nays, and one absent to approve Old City Hall Lease Negotiation Authority. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, Request for Council Action, Downtown Property Purchase Authority.
Thank you. So... Okay. So we have a comment, so I'm going to go ahead and talk, speak to this first. So one of council's goals was for us to acquire additional property and to also look for opportunities to help with filling vacant properties. So the Santee and Feed Store has been vacant and up for sale for the past several months, and we have been watching it, and it is a beautiful historical building with all sorts of neat brick and antiques and various things in it. We decided to go ahead and look at making a potential offer contingent on council's authority with the idea that we could both preserve the historical nature of that building and also bring additional businesses into town. So there are some options that would be up to council in the future if they do decide to move forward with the purchase of this building. Some of the things that we have discussed, which have, there's been various businesses and other community members who have expressed interest in something like this, would be having an artisan workspace, a gallery, potentially a restaurant or a small coffee shop. This will be right on the Festival Street, and there's the big door, so there's opportunity for music to play inside some of those buildings. And this could be a way that we could help bringing in tenants and restoring and preserving a historical, really amazing piece of Sweet Home. So we have made an offer that was accepted, and, actually, I can speak to that here. Well, actually, we are, so the offer that we have presented that was accepted was 260, 130 this year, and 130 next year. And so I would want to bring that forward. One of the nice things with having all three of these projects come at the same time is we're going to have potential in-kind services to help us with remodeling this. We're going to have two buildings that are getting filled with tenants very quickly, and this will give us another building to start working on to bring in additional tenants that could provide events and interesting places for tourists to go and economic development. There's some additional pieces that are happening in that parking lot right next to it. Right now, we have our community market, we have our farmer's market, but there's other events and things that might be coming in the future, and there's also some potential businesses that are also interested in the location right across from the feed store. We have an owner who's working on a business right now. So this is a way to really start revitalizing that entire square, and the synergy and work that can be done between the different agencies will really get all of this going quickly, and will hopefully bring people around, so.
Just as a question, you said that the workforce could be provided in kind. You were referring to CSC's workforce development, being able to help us with some of the remodeling.
That's correct. Yes.
Okay. You said there was a comment that you needed to share?
I received written testimony from Josh Victor, so I'm just going to go ahead and read that. "Hello, I want to talk about the city purchasing property. No offense to the city, but historically, the city has not been the best when it comes to property management and development. I would like to know why this is even being brought up. I know that we have a lot of projects in town that should be much higher on the priority list before the city starts buying local real estate, such as selling all the other real estate they aren't using, like the Old City Hall, the warehouse on 42nd, I think, and development of the large ponds they have down Clark Mill, just to name a few. Not to mention the property by the lake, the streets all over town that need to be redone, and the LID that was approved over five years ago that has still not been done down the entire 18th Avenue area. I know the city's in no hurry, but it's summer again, and we are still having water troubles and have to send water to this whole neighborhood. It's very expensive and inconvenient. This was passed over five years ago, and there is still nothing done, and now you guys are talking about buying more property. I'm sorry, but it upsets me that this is even an option without wrapping up all the other things in town that are open."
Does staff would like to speak to anything that was just mentioned in that comment?
Yes, absolutely. So, one, the warehouse on 42nd has had a tenant and a manufacturing company in it consecutively for all of these many years, so that hasn't been empty. We did, we have had some empty buildings, but one of the things that we were just talking about is filling those empty buildings. So I think that's already been resolved. As far as the LID has been concerned, that was delayed, but it also was because of developing the funding mechanisms, and all of that has been completed. The design is almost complete, and then that construction will happen. I know council's very familiar with the LID process, and it's, it's been a challenging one over the past few years. As far as the other projects, if you have any additional questions, most of them are in process. So we do have camping down on Osage, I mean, excuse me, down on the...
Cory Park.
...property. Property. And there's been some additional developments that are going on in there. We have also developed, put out a request for interest. We did receive one proposal from putting in a resort in that area. We're probably going to try to get some additional proposals as well. So there's a lot of things that are happening. I think. One of the challenges is our entire city is seeing delayed development in a lot of different areas. But I think we are able to show that we have actually made progress on numerous projects over the past two years.
Any questions from counselors?
I'd, I'd like to say something.
Yes.
Businesses are very, very important to our community's livelihood. And the services they bring into our community are a high concern for us. That we have as a council gotten incredible amount of done in the last couple of years. And our staff for the city have gotten a lot done. The downtown painting, what's happened at Sankey Park, our parks are looking really good. The park's master plan is looking amazing and we have a lot to be proud of. And I, I, the council has heard the community complain about the empty businesses downtown. The whole time I've been on the council, this has been a huge sore and heartache for our community. Especially for the people who remember how vibrant we were years ago. The city I grew up in is not the city we're looking at right now. The needs of our young people and our elderly are very different than they were then. And the opportunities we have are very different. So some, some things are going to switch. The idea that this is going to have a consortium here and this space is going to be used. This building before the city moved into it was vacant. And it's a lovely building and it's worth a lot more now than when we bought it. The Old City Hall has sat there, but now it has a new face and now it's going to have new tenants. And we should be incredibly proud of that. The idea that we're going to have an event street and possibly vitalize a building that is beside it. That some business can come in and rent. We're not taking from, we're making sure that there's a future for our town, for everybody. And so I think we should be proud of the work that's being done. And I know some people don't like that, but if we are not growing and changing and investing in our community, we're dying. And Sweet Home is, has so much potential. We have so much energy and we shouldn't have to be driving to Lebanon to get job training. We shouldn't have to be driving to Lebanon to go to a restaurant. We shouldn't be having to leave our community when. These things were here. We used to have a shoe store. We used to have clothing stores. We used to have all these lovely things. And we want to bring what we can back to our community. And I applaud this. I absolutely, that's a lovely old building. It's a historical building. People who've been in there, there's wonderful beams and that weight for them to be able to weigh the bales and all the things. That needs to be preserved. Because we don't have much in Sweet Home that has been preserved over the years because we live in a wet environment. A logging community. And we don't have a whole lot of brick buildings and architecture and things. This building needs to be preserved and we need to help revitalize it. And that's the goal. It's, it's an opportunity. And I really appreciate people who invest in our community. But we are really making changes and I think we should celebrate that. That's all I got to say.
Any other comments or questions from counselors?
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
So for the historical aspect of the building and the preservation of the history of our community, I really do support the purchase of this building.
Thank you both Counselor Gorley and Counselor Sanchez. I too am excited about the historic aspect of this. It's funny that Counselor Gorley, you mentioned the list of things that we've accomplished. Actually, my mayor report is going to cover a lot of things that we've accomplished. But I find it interesting that two of our goals, which is to acquire property and also fill some vacant buildings downtown. To try and draw more businesses to our downtown are being accomplished. And we haven't even begun our, our fiscal year yet. So if we pass this. Any other comments from counselors?
Mayor Coleman, I did receive one more request to speak if you'd like to recognize them.
Sure. Carla Hogan, can you please come forward and state your name and your address into the microphone, please?
28948 Liberty Road in Sweet Home. So, and then I also own the building at 1045 Main Street. Um, I do, I've, I've shown the property. I know exactly the property you guys are talking about. I'm trying to understand. How it's going to work as far as. If the city buys the building, I mean, that's, that should be a public, why, why is the city getting involved in public business? I mean, there's so many other projects. I hate, I, sorry, I have a hard time speaking in public, but. Remodeling and renovating buildings is incredibly expensive. I mean, and you talk about the in-kind, you don't do in-kind asbestos abatements. You cannot do in-kind plumbing. You cannot do, because you have to have licensed plumbers, licensed electricians, because it's a commercial property. Everything that I've done on my building, my husband's a contractor, we do our own sweat equity, but we have to hire those other things out. The amount of money that it costs to renovate these buildings is incredible. It just takes time. You know, I was very un, this pleased to see my building on the front of the New Era ad. Cause I, we bought it in December. We've literally been working on it the entire six months. A lot of hidden things that you just don't see. And I agree that the Santium Feed Store is an amazing building. It's very cool. But why, you guys talk about a coffee shop. We literally are finally having a coffee shop open in two weeks. Why would the city of Sweet Home compete with local business people? That, because that's exactly what you guys are talking about doing by buying this. If you want to invest in historical property. The museum needs help, you know? I can't think of, you know, anything more than that as the museum, you know, is struggling and they could use it. I just, I don't know how much thought really has been given with this. And I do not think the city of Sweet Home should be competing with our local, I just finally am seeing people, business owners getting to the light of the tunnel. You know, getting to the point where they can open their businesses. You know, the coffee shop into the brew across the corner. I was going to do a coffee shop. I, you know, when she decided she was going to do one, I'm not going to compete with her because that's great. That's what Sweet Home needs. But now I'm hearing that the city is going to be putting in something that we already have a business doing. I don't understand the, the logic in that for our community. I understand the need. But I don't, I mean, I just think that it'd be money better spent giving it to business owners, business property owners who can. Use those, you know, the $15,000 seat program is great, but it doesn't even cover my windows in our building. It's not enough to do the things that these buildings need. You know, a rough $40,000. HVAC, 25 to $50,000. I mean, it is a lot of money to renovate these buildings. Anyway, that was all, I'm, I, I want Sweet Home. I love Sweet Home. We all know that. I do everything. But I just don't understand the need to get. The city involved in something that should be a private empty business.
Thank you for your comment, Carla. And we know you love Sweet Home. Okay, Patrick Rogers, please come forward. State your name and your address into the microphone, please.
Good evening. Thank you.
Name an address, please.
I'm sorry.
Name an address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Patrick Rogers, 1995, Great Blue, Sweet Home, Oregon. Wow, property management's a whole nother world. And I don't know how city management and property management works. Most of the management involved. You know, is within facilities that you own, you know, that you don't have to make many decisions for. Instead of how the best, you know, utilize them and, and prepare them for the effective services you have. But once you get into renters and stuff. That's a big concern. I mean, there's a lot to do here. I know it feels good and it looks good, but by the time you're done. You've got half a million dollars of other people's money that you're saying, you know, this would be really cool to have. But, you know, again, it puts you guys in a whole different, you know, job description of what you did. Also concerns me that. You actually, even though we have no competition for some of our, you know, properties in our buildings, eventually. You know, if we get what we hope for and if we grow, you know, now City Hall can take possession of properties based on. You know, maybe offers and be in competition to the public sector. In other words, if I come in from out of town, which I've seen many people, you know, and I've only been here a short period, six years, seven years. Buy home and buy a business. And now they got to be in competition for the best buildings, you know, that the city may want to have. Who has, you know, all of their resources of the community's money. So again, it's not a parallel today. But it sets a precedent for a parallel, you know, in the future for what you're doing. And. It's a half a million dollars by the time you're all done, if you're lucky. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Um, so if I can speak to a couple of things, so it's not. Uncommon for a city who is trying to revitalize. To choose to invest in properties, particularly properties that are historical in nature. And in fact, many cities that are doing very well did exactly that. Thing in order to be able to preserve those cities and then to provide some additional pieces. When we were speaking about a coffee shop, for example, that was literally an example. One of the things that I think the city is in a unique position to do. Is one that we are able to obtain grants to restore buildings, particularly historical buildings. That the public can't necessarily do. That doesn't mean that the city would even need to hold on to this building forever. You could choose to get these grants, restore the building, have tenants, use it as a business incubator. To again, bring these businesses into Sweet Home. And then if you felt that the market was correct, you could sell it. One of the things having to do with the public sector and with cities is that. You're not allowed to purchase things. At, that aren't considered to be the appropriate value. So you're not able to act as a corporation and buy things up and by over. Bidding on projects. That's just not something that cities can do. But you also have to sell them for a fair market value. And that is a way to preserve taxpayer dollars. Additionally, if a city such as Sweet Home chooses to invest in this type of piece, it does become a facility. And so you are able to utilize it in a way that's considered for the best public good. So it's not that the city would be choosing to run a coffee shop. It would be that the city would be choosing to provide additional venues for businesses to come in. So I just wanted to make sure that all of that was clarified.
A couple of us went on tours of Independence and saw how the city there had. Worked on their small community to try and revitalize it. And one of the things they did do is purchase a building that was then used as a business incubator. Of downtown. So Counselor Gorley, did you have a comment?
Yes, I was just in Monmouth recently and Independence and Monmouth is beautiful, absolutely beautiful. And it's very exciting what's going on there. And we would purchase the building, make sure that it's being. Done right. And a different business would run that and own it and, you know, their business in there. It's, it makes sense to me that if we have the ability to get grants or whatever is necessary. Preserve a historical building, because we don't have a lot of them. That that's a good investment for us for our future. Because we know things aren't going down in price. And if we can put these empty buildings back, you know, in play for our community, that's a good thing. We have too many empty buildings. There's plenty to share for everybody. We just want businesses in all of them.
Madam Mayor, if I may, I'm just a really huge fan of getting a return on the investment of taxpayers' dollars. So if we're going to just throw money here, there and everywhere, I want to get some of it back and double it and watch it and make it grow. And so for that purpose, as well as the historical aspect of it. I would love us to get revenue instead of just charge people money.
Any other counselors have some comments or questions? You're good? Okay. I think our downtown core is worth investing in and I'm hoping that we can lead by example by filling buildings downtown. I know that there are business owners who are. Working on their buildings and they will be filling those buildings. And we have no desire to compete with. People who are opening up small businesses. Our desire is to provide spaces to allow more businesses to even come in. Counselors, we have RCA before us and the request, we can either. Not do anything with it. We can make a motion to accept it or we can make a motion to deny it.
So Madam Mayor, as I have been very concerned about our downtown core and the strength of it. And with that in my heart, I move to approve the authorization of the city manager to negotiate and approve a property transaction. For the downtown real estate we've discussed.
I'll second that.
Can I make a clarification regarding that motion? On the recommendation, it said up to $300,000 and the property that negotiated was 260. Is there any clarification on that?
You want the price in that? We've had a discussion about the price.
You can do it either way.
Okay.
Okay. We have a motion and a second on the table. Any discussion? Cecily, please call for a vote.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Now.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Thorsten?
Yes.
Let the record show that we have five ayes, one nay, and one absent to approve the manager, city manager to negotiate. This, this matter. Moving on to the next item on the agenda.
To negotiate and to move forward?
Move forward, yeah.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is reports of committees and reports from committee members. Reports of city officials.
So I'll keep mine fairly short. Um, I just wanted to mention that the dais that you all are sitting on. Or at was made by our incredible public works team. And it was donated wood from the Lynn County Parks Department. And it was wood that had already had to be felt. And so we were able to reuse it. Our public works, and I want to say a huge thank you to the Lynn County Parks Department and Lynn County for that too. Our public works department. Made this completely themselves. They milled the wood. They did the epoxy. They did all of the pieces. Something along these lines would normally cost tens of thousands of dollars. We made it entirely in-house, so it really only cost a few hours and. And the epoxy went. And this is very, very exciting. It's another way that we have been able to save money and do things in-house. And support. Potential options for both improving our parks, some of our other public facilities. It shows the type of craftsmanship and possibly even a revenue stream in the future. So I want to tell our public works team, particularly, let's see, Dominic, Tommy, Sean Haggy. And Sean Haggy and Sean Haggy again, and the, everybody else who helped out with this. And it's just gorgeous. And we were so excited to be able to present that all to you. I know you all had been interested in a dais and this has been a discussion for quite some time. The last one was lovely as well. It just didn't fit this space as well. And so we were really excited to get to share this. We also have the new microphones in case you all haven't noticed, which is also exciting. Another piece I wanted to mention is Juniper Street has now been completed. We're going to be finished starting. We're going to be finished starting up on Ironwood in the near future. And then we're continuing to look at some of our other roads. And we'll be sharing that shortly. We've been trying a few different ways of doing it in-house and different methods to provide the best cost savings that we possibly can and to get as much paying for our buck. So, roads, as I think everyone knows, a full-depth reclamation of a road costs about one point five to two point five million per mile. And so, we, whereas things like chip seal and some other options cost more along two fifty or hun- two hundred and fifty thousand per mile or so. So, we are trying to see if we can even reduce that with some of our other processes. So, that's another thing that our Public Works crew is working on. So, we'll tell you some more about that as we can. And finally, Citizens Academy, that kind of explains how a lot of these things work and also provides a lot of volunteer opportunities, will be starting at four thirty on July twenty-third and four thirty on July twenty-fourth. There will also be another one on August tenth from ten to two. And these will provide a lot of explanation about how city works. And we hope to have a lot of the community join us, and we'd love to have the councillors there, too. So, that's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Young. And I, I'm not supposed to say their names out loud either, who built the dais, but we also want to make sure Tommy's name's included in that. They had requested, not a big deal, but they did a great job. So, I just wanted to share that councillor Gorley had made a comment about the things that have accomplished, been accomplished. One of my favorite quotes is from President Harry S. Truman, when he said, "It's amazing what you can accomplish if you do not care who gets the credit." And I think sometimes in Sweet Home, individuals or groups claim credit for things, and they've done stuff for it. But as a whole, I'd love it if we could talk about as a whole what Sweet Home has done in the last year and a half or so. And just going to review some of them. FAC is opened. We got forty business buildings painted through the Paint the Town project. Wiley Creek fire disaster was avoided. All the new LED streetlights in town. We paid, we've paid Juniper. We're about to work on Ironwood. Fiber is being installed towards businesses and homes by Lyrica. All bank reconciliations are caught up. Quarry Park is now open to the public before it was closed off. Phase two of Sankey Park has begun, and we also had those swings just dedicated. Funding has been secured for our wastewater facility. That's a huge accomplishment. That's a huge expense and something that's been in the works the longest of anything we've talked about is that. So, that's a huge deal. This new dais and the microphones, big deal. The old ones are still on the other ship, you said, right? The ones that we first tried to, it's a crazy story. Parks Master Plan is completed, as you mentioned councillor Gorley. It's beautiful Parks Master Plan. Opening up of Samaritan Urgent Care happened with the helipad that unfortunately had to be used this weekend. Wiley Creek memory, memory care was opened. New, I already mentioned the new swing. It's two flashing cross rocks are up and functional, even though some of them keep getting hit. And we have a third in the works. ODOT Sidewalk Project, remember that mess? It is wrapped up. We didn't have much to do with it, but let's just say yay that that's been accomplished and done. Share has been revived. Sweet Home, what does it stand for? Active Revitalization Effort, that has been revived. There's some amazing things happening in Sweet Home, and I think that we do need to celebrate, and we need to be excited also about this potential of what we can do with our downtown core and with CSC coming to town. These are great accomplishments that we just need to say Sweet Home is doing great right now. Unlike other municipalities, our finances are solid. A lot of municipalities are having challenges right now, but things are being managed well. So, I just think we need to celebrate and, yeah, be excited about as a community and as a whole what we're being able to accomplish lately. So, moving on, department director reports. Any department directors want to share something from their reports? Nope. Any questions of councillors?
Oh, yeah, one. Great.
I'm going to borrow his because it's plugged in, I think. I just want to say from the police department side of things that the safety fair recently happened, same time they dedicated the swings at Sankey Park. And that was a fantastic success. The community really showed up in droves, even in spite of the rain that showed up as well. But we were very pleasantly surprised with everybody's participation, and I hope everybody had a great time. Thank you.
Yeah, you guys did a great job at that event. It was really well attended. And the rain mostly held off until the very last moment. So, that was good. So, thank you. Any other?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to add to your list. I don't know if anybody's drove down by the old mill property, but there is a beautiful fence and gates around it. That property was such an eyesore. And I looked at the way that they have finished the exterior of that, the one building where they're having the free concerts.
Yes.
It is really coming together. I'm very, very proud of the folks that are doing that hard work and making that transition for our community. And I did realize that many people don't realize that those are free concerts on Tuesday, and that's where they're at because they were moved.
Yes.
And so, it's, it's really exciting to see that transition happen at an old site like that.
Yes. And tonight's concert should still be going when we are wrapping up here. So...
And they're high.
They're record numbers. That's great. So...
Madam, if I may? I, I want to let the folks know that the staff that does the stuff, that gets us stuff done, is amazing. And they do really hard work. And I have to tell you that the parks, I, I've been on that for my first time I was in the council, and they are doing amazing stuff, too. When we ask them, if the parks ask you to do something, and Kelsey gets on top of that and everything, and it gets done. And you guys, the police officers, are doing a really good job. We've, we've been pretty blessed the last however long. When I, when I first got on the council, it was kind of tough. You know that. And it got better and better and better. And I think you guys were doing a really good job, and you should be knowing that. Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Any other council business for the good of the order?
Madam Mayor, if I may? I also agree with councillor Trask and Mayor Coleman and councillor Gorley. Everything that city manager Young and the staff have done to try to help our community thrive when we've been struggling, I'm just grateful for the meeting before last when we were talking about what to do with vacant buildings. And I was unaware of all that you have been doing for our own personal vacant buildings. I just want to say thank you. Having Community Service Consortium here, having Dr. Milstein and Ridgeway in our old city hall, potentially making space for people that can't afford to start a business in this community to have the opportunity to start a business, grow a business, sell their goods. I don't really think that I could ask for anything more with what we have to do that we're leading by example and getting it done. So, thank you. Thank you to the staff for all your hard work. I just had to say that. Can I say one more thing? We're going to have Icebox cook off next weekend, and we're not going to have a meeting. And so, we're going to have fireworks, and I can't wait to judge barbecue again, and I'm really excited. So...
Totally forgotten.
It's already here. Fourth of July is going to be next week.
Thank you so much. Any other council business for the good of the order? No? Okay. We'll wrap this meeting up at seven thirty-one PM.